Today is the nineteenth day of August. The time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us, for the record.
Rachel Genued, assessor's office.
Governor Phillips, Ada County.
Daniel Murphy, Fair Board member.
Cody Smith, operations.
Ryan Blaine, procurement.
I'm a clerk as the education to Josh Brown, operations.
Elizabeth Dunkey, communications.
Real IT guy.
He's your boardroom to clerk's office.
Beth Moss, governor.
Good. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
All right, no change to the agenda. All right, we have the first item up on the agenda is to reappoint two members of the Expo Idaho Advisory Board. We have one of them here with us. Would you like to take a few moments and give us your credentials? You don't need to if you don't want to.
Well, I really am humbled to be able to serve on the Board for the last three years. And I'm happy to serve for another three. And like I told you before, anytime you guys need help, just let me know.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? I'd like to add that Dan's done a great job. But I think you haven't missed any meetings, have you? He's there most of the time, offers good. And Steve Wilder, the same thing. He has a background in agriculture. So I would accept a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Daniel Murphy and Steve Wilder to the Expo Idaho Advisory Board. Terms to expire nine thirty twenty twenty eight.
And I would willingly gladly second that motion. I think what's going on right now at Expo Idaho is an example of how the whole Board has functioned in making that a highlight of the state for the entire state, actually. It's the largest event in this state. Thank you, and I second the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll just recognize Daniel as sort of the unofficial photographer, sometimes official. Takes great fair pictures, pictures of a lot of county events, a lot of our ceremonies, and I really appreciate all the work you put into that.
Thank you. So you've heard the motion. Been moving second it all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you're reappointed. You'll get a letter. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have some unfinished business. I accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, we've got a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So award of bid number twenty five oh six nine, rebid of Ada County Sheriff's uniforms. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We were prepared to come before you this morning with an award recommendation for bid two five zero six nine. However, we received a protest from uniform to gear. Therefore, we'd like to re-table the award recommendation to August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, open business meeting for further consideration. And that is the protest there. In the meantime, we'll carve out some time to talk with you about this protest.
Okay, I'll accept the motion. Do table till eight twenty six.
I'll move to table the award of bid two five zero six nine to analyze a protest filed in that matter to August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
I second the motion.
Okay, I think you've heard the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And now we have a number of resolutions, five to be exact. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number thirty one zero nine, a resolution authorizing repayment of land or water conservation fund grant money to the federal government to the LBA county from the grant requirements of Lady Bird Park. It's worse. Is there anyone here which to testify? Josh, you want to say anything?
I don't. Chairman, no.
Okay. Fine. Okay. Anyone else here wants to say anything?
I have some that I'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll refer everybody else if they want to first. But I guess everyone knows one of my passions is the two hundred and fifty anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. And I think this is an appropriate time to say that. That Ada County is taking the opportunity to independence, declare our independence from federal government, uh, Lady Bird Park. This resolution actually, also we have the expression that we have here in the dedication for recreation. And that's why, that's why we took the federal dollars in nineteen ninety, or seventy, sixty-six, is because we wanted recreation for the people of Ada County. So we took the money then, developed Lady Bird Park. And what we're doing, and that same geography right now exemplifies our determination of providing recreation to the people of Ada County. Josh is here. He's the project manager for our new park at Expo Idaho. And I don't know if he wants to say this, but we now will have over eighty acres of that same location dedicated to recreation. I think this is a good way that we can. It is probably a win-win for everybody. It's a win for the people of Ada County, win for the state of Idaho, who actually applied for this grant for us in the first place, helped us do that. Win for the people of the United States, because we're giving money back to the taxpayers of the country. So actually, it's just a win-win for everybody. By this resolution provides a win-win for everybody. So anyway, that, I would make that motion that we, and then we can have further discussion on approving resolution three one zero nine as it's listed on the agenda.
Okay, well, any other discussion?
Well, I'll just say that Lady Bird Park is a, is an underutilized asset in Ada County. A lot of people don't even realize that the grass on the corner of Chindon and Glenwood is actually a county park. I think people just assume it's, it's part of the fairgrounds. And when they go over there, they just assume that they're probably trespassing when the fair's not open. But apart from a few little league games, it is, it's underutilized, underdeveloped. And when we came up with the idea for the brand-new Expo Park, our intent was to sort of follow up the process that's laid out in federal law, where if you want to take some recreational property that the federal government gave you, you, you can't give it away. You have to transfer it for another park of equal value. And I think we, in good faith, attempted to follow that process and were frustrated by several layers of bureaucracy at the federal and state level. But I think we met every intent of the federal law, the spirit of the federal law, that, you know, we were given this asset and we need to continue to use it. And I think that's now being used in the park at Expo Idaho. So we should be able to, I guess, get a second bite at the apple. And so this is something we're trying to simply just give the federal government back its money, hopefully that they will turn it over to us, with the understanding that we're using it in the interest of the public and the people, which is the intent of the law, that it's being used for recreation opportunities. And again, which I think we've demonstrated with our building of the park at Expo, that we are dedicated to having recreational opportunities for the people of Ada County.
Absolutely. In fact, I would just buttress that with it, not only are we making it a better project, we've got fifty acres of park. It's being funded, by the way, with federal dollars, ARPA dollars, to build the park. And then on the end of it, this is where we originally intended to possibly move Lady Bird Park. Professional soccer is going in. We tried to move Lady Bird back there. And we were just forwarded as Commissioner indicated by several layers of bureaucracy. I'm not sure what the final issue was, but, but was approved. And this park can be, this property, there's twenty, twenty acres there in this Lady Bird Park. And the county owned the property in the get-go. They just applied to the United States Department of Interior for a grant to, to just build it, to plant the grass and put in other items. And, and it's all, all done. And this is a much better recreation facility that we're putting back behind there. It's going to be, even the soccer is going to be available to the public, because there's some additional soccer fields that's going to be built there eventually. And the grandstand, of course, and all the property there is owned by the county once it's all completed. So it's a, it's a win-win for everybody, I think. And we're, and we're attempting just to say, hey, thank you very much for the loan. Here's the money back. And we hope it works. So with that, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three one oh nine. And we have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion? A little second. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, not a second. And I think this is going to be, it's probably going to be kind of unique, because I don't recall very many local government units saying, thanks for the money, here's the back. But that's what we're doing here. And so all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a couple other motions, resolutions. I'll open a public hearing on resolution thirty one ten, a resolution for sole source procurement e-poll books through Ten X software. I'm sure the clerk's office would love to talk about that.
Mr. Chair, I'd love to discuss resolution number three one one zero. This has to do with our elections electronic poll books. Anyone who has ever voted in Ada County, whether that be early voting or on election day, they've interacted with a poll worker on a tablet, a device. It's seven hundred and twenty of these tablets. The software is powered through Ten X. So we've had a long partnership with them, and it makes a lot of sense to continue this partnership. In addition, the Secretary of State is also embarking on a long partnership with Ten X as well. So it makes absolute sense for Ada County to remain with Ten X and stay in that umbrella of the state agency. So per Idaho code, this certainly falls into a realm in which sole source, it makes a lot of sense. We're certainly asking for your support.
Any other discussion?
Just, just a question, just to reiterate for the, for the public. This has, these have been verified, tested, all of the proper processes in terms of their integrity and how they manage the polls and all that, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Absolutely, yes. This is leading art technology that most of, all of the large jurisdictions in the nation are already utilizing as well. Ada County's been on it for a while. And we're quite proud with the product, quite proud.
And there's, there's never been any question about how they function, et cetera, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I can't say that no one has ever questioned that, because certainly we get questions on everything in the election realm. But Ada County has never seen any shortfalls with Ten X solutions, no.
Thank you.
Well, great. If there's no further comment, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty one ten. Call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty one ten as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty one eleven, a resolution for sole source procurement to integration software for Bluecrest sorting machines. You want to say anything about this?
Chairman, one more time. Yes, this is also with Ten X who we just discussed, but this is not our electronic poll books. This is our Bluecrest machine, the very large machine that's in our warehouse. And it's critical for signature verification. We refer to that machine as Bessie. I think you're more familiar with that term. But this is just to continue our partnership with Ten X. They provided us with quotes. We like the quotes. Again, we would like to contract with them.
Okay, any further discussion on, on resolution thirty one eleven?
Again, this has been tested, verified, all of, we don't, we don't just have that machine sitting there. It does actually get reviewed, just like the, it's as to its functioning, like all of the machines at the gas stations. I don't know if you know that, but they're, they're all invested, they're all tested by the State Department of Agriculture on a regular basis, so that they make sure that their calculations are correct. That happens with those machines, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, absolutely. We've actually had the Bluecrest team has been in our warehouse the last week working on the unit. And they do so at a pretty regular cadence as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Now I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty one eleven and call for a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number thirty one eleven as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll now open the, the public hearing on resolution thirty one twelve, resolution for the conveyance of two shelving units from Ada County Elections to Canyon County. You want to talk about that? Mr. Chair, I'd love to. Any of the shelves?
Well, so resolution three one one two is all part of the elections remodel. As you know, we're moving the footprint of the warehouse. The cyclone fences that are in there are cages that we call them. They're getting repurposed in different dimensions, and so our shelving needs have changed. We reached out to our friends over at Operations. They did not have a need or a want for these shelves. So we reached out to our friends in Canyon County, and they put their hand up. So we're just trying to move two shelves for a value of about nine hundred dollars over to Canyon County. I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve resolution three one one two as listed on the agenda.
Chair. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll have resolution thirty one thirteen, resolution adjusting the county budget to affect receipt, unscheduled revenue for the Ada County juvenile services budget. Any questions or discussion on this one? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing on resolution thirty one thirteen. Call for a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number three one one three as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Bob, you've got another, another project up here.
We do.
We're looking at, at procurement to open the bids on RFP twenty five oh sixty eight. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, evaluation team has completed the initial valuations for this project, but would like to request additional time for review. Therefore, we'd like to request that we re-table the final ranking and award recommendation to the August twenty sixth open business meeting for further consideration.
Okay. Any questions? Not all, accept the motion.
I move to table RFP two five zero six eight based on if you give the evaluation team more time to evaluate until the August twenty sixth open business meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looks like you're going to open a bid now.
Well, our second item under new business is the bid opening for bid two five zero seven zero, the Ada County Victim Services stairs and raft replacement and courthouse front entry stair replacement twenty twenty five. And we received two responses for this project. And Ryan has our Bonfire E-Procurement system all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
We're ready.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this morning we'll be looking for the name of the bidder when this spreadsheet opens up. Also, there will be a total bid amount that is inclusive, inclusive of a base bid and an owner's contingency of ten thousand dollars. And there's also one additive alternate that's included in the bid. And this additive alternate will be at the discretion of the county, whether we want to proceed forward with it or not. And that additive alternate is for pavers instead of concrete.
Okay.
All right, is our spreadsheet coming up here?
Yeah.
I feel like we need the Jeopardy theme.
Need something, music.
Bob, I am sorry.
Does, does a bonfire have any music goes along with it?
Sure. We'll, we'll put that in as a request for an upgrade. I've never been good at a joke on the spot, so I apologize. That's all right.
I apologize.
No worries, take your time. Ryan's pinching for Evan this morning.
If you tell us about the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, what we're doing statewide while we're waiting?
Yeah, that works.
I'd be happy to. So perhaps you've seen the revolutionary Spudgy Buddies.
Oh.
Have you seen any?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there are several of them going around the state. Elected officials have the opportunity to reserve one to join them at selected events. So perhaps we will have a guest one of these days. Other events include, there's one on the Capitol steps on September eleventh. I believe it's from approximately eleven to one. It's kind of Idaho's big kickoff for the event, so I can get more details on that.
Everybody's going to be having their signature, which is going to be unfolded at the Capitol. Anybody who signs on July fourth, correct?
That is correct. Right, so Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. So there are approximately twelve scrolls that are going around the state, and individuals can sign the scroll, and then they will be combined and then unraveled sometime before next Fourth of July.
Well, good. Are we ready?
Yes, Mr. and Mr. Chairmen, I apologize. Bob needs me to zoom in so far that I couldn't find the button until I zoomed back in.
No, no worries. So our two bidders up there are Engineered Structures Incorporated, Optimum Build Group, and Engineered Structures Incorporated has a total bid amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars. And Optimum Build Group has a total bid amount of seven hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. And, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we'll need a little time to review these bids, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay. I'll accept the motion then.
I move that we table bid twenty five zero seven zero until the August twenty sixth open business meeting to allow the team to review the bids that have been opened today.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Gary, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we have a representative from the clerk's office.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Our distinguished clerk is in Salt Lake City with various members of our elections team. We've got more team members leaving later today and tomorrow. The destination is Salt Lake, because it is the Elections Center's National Conference. More importantly, it's also the graduation. So you've got a handful of team members that have embarked on two years of CERA certifications, and they will get their stripes on Thursday. So we're pretty honored to have them and show the citizens that we're determined to continue the professionalism of our, our election staff. So we'll be in Salt Lake.
All right. Any other, anything else, any questions from the, from the commission? Thank you.
Please. Thank you.
Okay, we now have a catering permit, a couple of catering permits, and we have a couple of new licenses. Any questions or issues with any of the catering permits or new licenses? Not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the. I'll move to approve the catering permits and the licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I think, yeah, you'll need to at least mention the ratification, because one of them's already been signed.
Okay, I'll move to approve and ratify the catering permits and/or the licenses previously identified on the agenda. Remaining catering permisses, permits and licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now we have a claims journal. Any questions or issues on the claims journal? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize payment of the claims journal dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have five personnel actions. Any questions or issues with any of the personnel actions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the assessor's office.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Nothing to add here. I'm just here as a representative if there are any questions for the seventy-two tax cancellations on this morning's agenda.
Okay, I don't have any questions. However, I might add, as I typically do, that these are not cancellations of taxes, but mere adjustments. But the code requires that they be called cancellations. We're canceling a portion of their taxes. Okay, any question or discussion on the, uh, cancellations? Hearing none, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the tax cancellation as explained, tax cancellation as explained by the chairman and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. You, uh, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. We're fortunate to have our distinguished treasurer with us. Let's bed on. Go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I often update on investments or property taxes. Um, another important role that our office fulfills is that of the public administrator. And as you know, this is where an individual dies in the county without an heir, next of kin, a personal representative, and we become the court-appointed administrator of the estate. Well, we've been asked to, um, present on this topic at the upcoming IAC conference in September. Apparently, there's a growing need for public administration in parts of the state. And we have a good process working closely between the treasurer's office, the coroner's office, Indigent Services Board, Community Guardian. Um, so we're really honored to present on that topic in our practices and how we secure assets, pay creditors, and also really recoup the county's costs. Um, so we're happy to discuss that. Um, so, thanks to the several offices who've helped us with that. But that's what we're working on right now.
Okay, well, thank you. Good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll be there to listen to you.
Great.
Yes, and that's in September, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Any questions or discussions on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, ratification of, uh, commercial exhibits, uh, that I have already signed and, uh, a, uh, an interim agreement. Uh, any, any questions or discussion on any of the, uh, commercial exhibits or interim agreement? None, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the, uh, the, uh, or ratify the signatures of the chairman on the, um, agreements as listed on the agenda, interim agreements and the other agreements as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the, uh, Parks and Waterways, Barbara Park Education and Event Center. We have five agreements. Is there any question or issues on any of these agreements?
Toys for Tots.
Toys for Tots are on there for the thirteenth of, uh, September, which happens to be the same day that we're going to be doing the, uh, the, uh, duathlon. Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Barbara Park Education and Events Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have two agreements, uh, between Ada County and Central District Health for our distribution box, the courthouse. And the other one is as order, uh, to, uh, change order to Agreement number, uh, three-oh-six-nine-oh-one-two-five, uh, public record software. Any question or issues about either of the agreements?
Just a note on the, on the, uh, public record software. That, that's something that's gonna help us do our public records requests in much more expeditious and, uh, way for the public to have access to the public records that they do, but, uh, makes it easier for them to have access to public records, so...
Great.
This, this is a...we're already doing that, but this is in addition to that software.
All right, great, I accept the motion.
I move to appro-uh, approve the agreements, uh, as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have the weekly indigent items. I've looked them over. Is there any, any question or error issues on the weekly indigent items? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to, um, uh, accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated, um, Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, uh, next, we have a miscellaneous item, the workers' compensation stipulation and agreement of some settlement and order of discharge for case number IC-two-oh-two-three-oh-five-five-two-one-four. Any questions on that one? None, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the workers' compensation stipulation agreement for case number two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-five-five-two-one-four as listed on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none? We are adjourned. Thank you.